I call this meeting to order at this time. Please stand for the invocation, Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Father, we are grateful that through your Son and extending to us your grace, you've given us a new life. And Lord, we pray as we begin a new season that we would be granted the wisdom and the insight into your plan for our city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Catholic Church. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one
Okay, next item on the agenda is a proclamation to recognize Empoleo Day for the Rotarians, but they're not here yet. So what I'll do is go on to citizens' comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments about any of the council agenda items are appreciated by the council and will may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda item. Council is prohibited from acting on or discussing that item before them at this time. Okay? First person that would like to speak tonight is Penny Ringarder?
Yes, you know I have to go first.
You're number one. Please take your name and your address for the records, please.
Okay, Penny Ringarder, 3909 Parkwood Drive, Corinth. So I kind of wanted to talk about this active transportation plan that we all just found out about that apparently has been going on for a while. My first comment is this is a pretty big change for all of us and for us to just find out about this is pretty shocking. And I'm surprised this isn't something that the citizens had the right to vote about. If y'all are fixing to take Corinth Parkway from a four-lane road down to a two-lane road, that's going to cause quite a bit of congestion for us on a daily basis. We take this road every day to go to work and come home from work and we already see traffic on it when we're going to and from with all of the softball games, the baseball games, the soccer practices, the soccer games. You've got the Agora stuff going on now. You've got this Goddard daycare here that you have traffic that makes U-turns every day trying to get to that daycare. You have to wait for them. You've got all these new apartment complexes being built, this over-55 center that's not even built yet. You've got these new homes here that are being built. The traffic just gets heavier and heavier every day. I really do not understand this plan of taking this lane from four lanes down to two lanes. What is the purpose of having one of these lanes be in a parking lane for the cars, especially going all the way down to Dobbs Road? And to me, this is just something that the citizens have the right to be able to vote on this when you're fixing to change our lives dramatically. And why wasn't it brought up to us to vote? That's really my comments on this. You're fixing to make a dramatic change in our lives and we didn't even have the right to say anything about it. So I don't even need all three minutes.
Thank you. Dee Stanfield? Please take your name and your address to the records, please.
I'm Dee Stanfield. Address is 3903 Parkwood Drive. And I heard about this a couple of months ago from someone and then I started asking questions and I was told that it did not pass. And then I am now, and we never got anything in the mail. I am on Facebook. I've never seen anything. I'm involved with the CPA, our VIPS program, the CERT, the MRC. I'm involved in a lot of things. I'm trying to get more involved in our city. I'm now taking your first citizen class. That's how I heard about this last week. So I started an email with a lot of people and that's thankfully, a lot of people have emailed and shown up. Based on what your comments earlier were, and I do appreciate all of the help and the work that has gone into it. My husband is a biker. I do want to keep him safe. I think there's an option using the sidewalks. There's a lot of room there. It's a lot cheaper to expand a sidewalk and to mark a sidewalk than it would be to change these roads. I think that's a lot of money for us to be putting into that. You wanted examples. That's my two cents as far as the example. Change the sidewalks. Why do we need parking all the way down to Creek Bend? That's not downtown. That's soccer fields, that's community park. In part of the city, the class, I think November 12th or something like that, there's going to be a community park discussion about what's going to happen. We're going to put pickleballs. What else are we going to do back there? That's going to add more traffic, more people, more, and you're wanting to take that down to one lane? So why parking all the way down to there? Because you've got parking out by the baseball fields. Let's see. Yeah, the community park, traffic to four, two lanes, Corinth Parkway not, Corinth Parkway isn't part of downtown. I don't understand, there's nothing there that you're going to be able to make as downtown. I understand everything behind Agora and I guess maybe that's where my misunderstanding is. What does Corinth Parkway have to do with downtown other than being able to flow traffic there? So, thank you.
Thank you. Art Breddson? Please take your name and your address to the record, please.
Art Breddson, 3805 Parkwood Drive. All right, I agree with Dee. First, there's a park and a subdivision there. Why do we have to have parking? There's no one that's going to park there. It's not part of downtown. It'll never will be part of downtown because you're not going to kick the subdivision out, you're not going to kick the park out. I drive that road six times a day, easily. It's a busy road. I agree with people that say, hey, it's too fast. I totally agree with that. But the fact is, the interstate has an accident once a day in our, between Swisher and Corinth Parkway. Once a day, it's being routed through our little subdivision. Don't like it, but it's got to go somewhere. I mean, it does. It has to go somewhere. I was looking, following his map. I understand the North Street, trying to make that more downtown and there's empty land there. I totally get that. But you can't make downtown out of a subdivision and a parks. And the traffic that goes through there is crazy, you know, especially coming home from work and that. The weekends is the only time I see bikers in the morning, okay? So to act like we're going to shut a whole road down or take away a whole lane for bikers, I mean, don't get me wrong, I like bikers and that, but there's a lot of traffic every day to give them something for the weekend, you know, that's usually in the morning. So I just don't get it. I'm sorry that you guys have done all this work and we're all just finding out about it. And if Dee's just finding out about it, then it wasn't very good because she knows everything. So, well, yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lauren Hess? Please take your name and your address to the records, please.
Hi, I'm Lauren Hess. I live at 4112 Creek Falls Drive. That's in the Creekside subdivision there at the four-way stop at Corinth Parkway. I drive that Parkway multiple times today. And what I love about Corinth Parkway is how open it is. And I don't, I think if you put parking along Corinth Parkway is going to obstruct line of sight and being able to see our beautiful greenways and everything that we have done to make Corinth beautiful. And plus, you have parking now beside a baseball field and beside the soccer fields where kids are playing and running and they're going to dart out between parked cars. When there's events at Agora, we never get overflow parking into our neighborhood. And I don't think the people at the parks get overflow parking in their neighborhood either. So having street parking all the way up to us, I think is unnecessary. I do like the idea of bike lanes. I think Highland Shores in Highland Village, that road is sort of a fair, but it's safe, it's well-developed and they, the bikers, I don't know Scott, if you've ever driven there or rode your bike there. I thought, I think they did that area really nice. And while we're talking about Corinth Parkway and what needs to be done to fix it, I think there needs to be a three-way stop at Shady Rest and Corinth Parkway. It is incredibly hard when you're walking or taking your bike to get across Shady Rest when there's cars coming from the interstate, they're turning left to get onto Shady Rest and go to, down to Walton and those other neighborhoods. And having a stop sign there would help with traffic flow and a backup that occurs onto Corinth Parkway. And it would also slow people down. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Stanfield? Please take your name and your address to the record, please.
Greg Stanfield, 3903 Parkwood Drive. First of all, thank you very much for this opportunity to share our concerns. Unfortunately Dee, and I think a lot of lack imagine that, that is actually unusual. We've been married over 30 years, but somehow it happened. At any rate, she's already stated the big points and that is, the big thing is that we're taking, if I understood the discussion at first, they said that we were going to double our traffic. They say we're about half of the traffic that's to be expected. And we're going from four lanes to two. We just let that sit there for a minute. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. We live there, we've already expressed all the concerns, so I won't belabor that point. The big other thing, again, to emphasize is that, as I understand it, downtown Parkway is supposed to be on Corinth North, not Corinth Parkway. What on earth parking is going to do there besides interfere with traffic flow and create congestion during softball, during, you know, football, baseball, soft, everything, or soccer, everything that goes on there? If it is in fact, I kind of like the idea of the Corinth North, if that's what you want to develop, maybe start there. But this is a huge change. We talked about engineering studies, what the engineers say, and I don't remember his name, I apologize, but a worker bee that has done a tremendous amount of work and hats off to him, I understand, I appreciate that. What he has said is he said, well, we'll go back to the engineers and talk to them. Well, that's more money. And not only that, but the engineers are doing on something that is projected. Have you looked at the Buc-E's intersection? And do you think they did an engineering study on that? And have you ever gone there and had to set through three lights? Okay, just let that sit there for a minute. The idea that you can trust on, you know, what this engineer, this study says, I don't know that I would give it entire, the credibility that we seem to be giving it. I really believe there's going to be a tremendous amount of congestion, again, twice as much traffic, half as many lanes. We spent a lot of money as a city developing and planning for the future by putting in four lanes and now you want to make it down into two? They did it four lanes because they anticipated growth. And you see the growth. You hadn't even seen the influx of people, I'm running out of time, but that are at the apartments that are not even complete yet, that are at the new homes that they're continuing to build, that are all the other, out of time here, but there are all the other things, the 50-plus center, the, all the things that they're bringing into Corinth. I think it's great. I'd really appreciate you guys are trying to make our place a, you know, something we can call city of Corinth. But maybe let's think smaller, just think north Corinth. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time I'd entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
And I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Okay, it's unanimous. Item number three, conduct a public hearing to consider testimony and act on the city-initiated request to amend multiple sections of the United Development Code, including UDC subsection 2.09.01.08, non-residential landscape requirements, and UDC subsection 2.09.01.0B, residential landscaping requirements to require the plant, planting of shade trees between the sidewalks and curbs of all streets adjacent to or within new development. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight Melissa Daly, our planning director, will cover this item. Answer any questions that you have.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This change is, in a nutshell, to allow for street trees to be planted along the curb edge. This is something you have seen in a number of zoning cases recently, but actually isn't allowed in our current zoning code, but we've put that language into the planned developments that you've seen in the, in the last two years or so. So this covers landscaping requirements for non-residential multifamily and single-family zoning and would require planting of shade trees along the landscape buffer of new developments adjacent to public streets and in front yards of single-family residences. No requirements for shade trees within parkways. So in lieu of that, we're looking at ornamental trees. So essentially kind of switching, putting the shade trees on the curb edge and the ornamental trees further in. In non-residential and multifamily districts, the amended regulations would require one ornamental tree per 30 linear feet within the landscape buffer along the building line. So that's closer to the building, away from the street. And then one shade tree per 30 linear feet within the Parkway. So that's between the sidewalk and the curb. And then the director of planning could make exceptions. We always have things that come up like utilities underground or overground, or overhead, excuse me, where we have to make exceptions to that, where trees cannot be planted. Landscape requirements for the perimeter alone collector and arterial roadways for non-residential and multifamily districts would also apply to single-family districts. So shade trees that are now required in the front yards, those would be moved to, to the curb edge between the sidewalk and the curb. And tree requirements would vary depending on the lot width. We thought about the fact that you have driveways and so you have to account for that. So for lots less than 50 foot wide, one shade tree within the Parkway adjacent to the lot. And then greater than 50 feet wide, one shade tree per 30 linear feet. And then common open space lots would require one shade tree per 30 linear feet within the Parkway as well. These are some of the recent developments that have essentially incorporated that, that idea with the, with the street trees and then the ornamental trees on the, on the lots where there was, where there was room. As of, sorry, I didn't change that date, as of today, we haven't received any letters of support or opposition. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval, five to zero at the regular meeting and staff recommends approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And any questions from council?
I just have a curiosity question. Did this used to be how it was and then they changed it back? Because in my neighborhood, this is how it was. And then the city came in about, I don't know, it was probably 15 years ago, and told people they needed to remove their trees out of, out of that area because it was causing problems with sidewalks. So they asked people to remove those, all those trees.
Oh, that breaks my heart.
Me too.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I mean, I'm not sure.
You don't know the history of that? Oh, no, it was well before my time, too.
Okay, this, the code was, this particular code was done in 2013.
Oh, it could be.
So I, no, I don't think anybody in our department is aware of a change occurring in the code. That may have just been a policy decision.
Yeah, I don't know. Because a lot of my neighbors took all their trees out of the boardwalk right there.
That's unfortunate. Yeah, and our code currently doesn't allow them next to the curb edge. And so this would be a change to that. And by the way, the, and if you plant the right kind of trees and they're watered, the sidewalks do just fine over time. And one thing that we have changed is putting the utilities under the street so that they're not under the trees, of course.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions, council?
That was my, my question. So when these trees get real big and the roots, we're not worried about them like bulking up the sidewalks and things like that?
It can happen. I'm not saying it would never happen, but it's, it's not, it's less, it's not as common, it's not that common. But it can happen where you have to go in and do repairs to the sidewalk. I mean, I think one of the things to keep in mind is that there is a significant increase in property value that comes when you have tree-lined streets. The streets that have them have higher property values and that can help make up for the cost to come in and do repairs and you're probably talking 20-plus years down the road.
But you could still have one in your yard.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, anybody can plant a tree in their yard. Most of our PDs, it depends on the lot size, if there's space. So some of the, some of the developments that have had shorter front setbacks, we did not require a tree in the front yard because you want room for the shade tree to grow. Those that are setback more, you could put an ornamental. And of course, anybody can plant their own tree. You know, you don't need a permit for that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Okay, at this time I'll open it up for a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wanted to speak to this? Please put your name and your address.
Dee Stanfield, 3903 Parkwood Drive. And my question would be if you're requiring the developers to do that, when there is a problem with the, and it doesn't affect me because I'm not moving there, but when there is a problem, who's going to take care of that? The city with the sidewalks or is that going to be an HOA problem? Yeah, homeowner or HOA problem. Who's going to be responsible for fixing that?
Typically, it is the property owner that pays for any repairs out to the property line, which goes to the edge of the property that includes the sidewalk. If there's a statement within the, if it's a PD, for example, and we do have some of those, Saddlebrook is, is an example, where parts of the neighborhood on the 30s, the HOA is to maintain all of that. So it can vary depending on whether that's written into the zoning.
Are there any other questions? Okay, please take your name and your address to the records, please.
Penny Ringarder, 3909 Parkwood Drive. Not that it affects me here, but I will say I lived in Flyaramount prior to moving to Corinth. And we had that and our sidewalks were terrible. Most of them were terrible because of the trees that were there. And it was on the property owner to have to fix that. And it was a very expensive thing to have to fix. And, you know, just speaking from a property owner, that would be very frustrating knowing that you're going to make a developer have to have these trees, knowing that maybe 15, 20 years down the line, your property owner is going to be responsible for having to fix that sidewalk. And there's not a whole lot of trees that you're going to plant that aren't going to end up getting the roots, that are going to end up destroying the sidewalk. And you say, if they're watered, well, I don't know if y'all have to pay your water bills in Corinth, but they ain't cheap, you know? And if they're watered, it's putting the homeowners up to watering that tree. I know personally, my water bill's $350, $400 during the summertime. So that's just, it's not going to impact me, but I'm just stating that for future homeowners.
Thank you.
I do have another question. So it's not a requirement, now you can't put a tree there for people, right? So it's not a requirement, but we want to make it a requirement, not an option?
Correct. It is required that you plant a tree in the front yard, which by the way, can be just as close to the sidewalk as one on the other side of the sidewalk. But rather than it being in the front yard, that it be on the curb edge. So today we require the shade tree. We're just recommending that the shade tree be planted at the curb edge rather than in the front yard.
And nothing will stop the person who purchased that property from removing that tree?
Um, I'm not sure.
I mean, unless it's in their HOA documents or governing documents, I don't know once the developer puts in the tree and then...
The reason I don't know the answer to it is because it's in the right of way.
Oh, I see, okay.
And so I'm thinking through that, but because it's in the right of way, there I believe would be restrictions to what you can do in the right of way.
Oh, okay.
If it's in your own yard, of course, you can remove trees, but if it's in the right of way, that changes.
Okay.
Glenn, sidewalks, let's just make sure we're not conveying the wrong thing here. Sidewalks, the way our ordinances read, belong to the city. If, if a tree that was required to be planted caused a problem with the sidewalk, that's on us to fix. That's not going to be, we would never go back to the resident and say, hey, am I correct? I just want to make sure that's not what...
And we have a lot of them in my neighborhood where people didn't remove their trees. And honestly, our sidewalks are not in bad shape. And my neighborhood is 28 years old. So it, it's really pretty when they're on the, I mean, it makes a canopy and it is really pretty.
I just have a quick question.
Please take your name and your, ma'am.
3112 Blake Street. I just have a quick question. If I understood you correctly, from, if this passes, every home in Corinth must either have a tree in the front yard and/or in that, by the sidewalk. Is that correct? Am I understanding you correctly?
No, that's not correct.
New development only.
New developments.
Strictly for the new developments?
Yes.
My apologies and I thank you.
Great question. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience who wants to speak to this issue? If not, I close the public hearing and entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 25-10-16-50, amending multiple sections of the Unified Development Code, including the UDC subsection 2.09.01.A, non-residential landscaping requirements, and UDC subsection 2.09-01.B, residential landscaping requirements as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Business agenda, consider an act on selecting a brand for the downtown Corinth. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a follow-up item from a discussion you had two weeks ago where I think Emma Crotty had presented the findings of our subcommittee and our EDC as we looked at amending our downtown brand. And we're going to go over that again a little bit tonight. And I think tonight we're just seeking some formal direction on the council, from the council, as we move forward with our downtown planning.
Well said. I mean, I'd be happy to answer any questions. These are the options that we discussed at the workshop that the committee narrowed down to as we discussed. Option 1A was the most selected option by the committee as well as the EDC, which made the recommendation for option 1A. So I'd be happy to, and I also have the, and that's that option. And then there were some examples given as to how, different ways they could be used. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions from council?
On 1A, the, in the circle, the blue, I don't know if that's a little flower or a leaf or is there a significance to that?
I think it's a Greek shape of a, some type of flower. I'm sorry, I don't know which kind, but it's, it's a nod to the Greek imagery.
I think they like it, it kind of tied back in with the Greek theme that we currently have for the main city logo. That's what I recall the input was.
Because I like that one. I would like it better without those, but that's just my, my little opinion, so.
And 1A was the most chosen by the boards that were tasked with putting this together.
Yeah, so the committee was given a survey. This was the one they overwhelmingly selected. And then without telling them the committee's recommendation, we did a survey on an app with the EDC and they also selected that one.
Nice, okay.
Any other question?
I was on the committee and we saw a lot. We saw a lot of different iterations of, a lot of them. And so personally for me, I think this ties in well with kind of what we have now, with kind of the same color red that's in the Agora sign. So, my two cents.
All right, any other questions? Okay, I'd entertain, I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move to approve item 1A and direct staff to proceed with implementing the branding and marketing and development efforts for downtown Corinth.
I'll second. I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. Unanimous. Item number seven, consider an act on an interlocal agreement with Span Transit for Transportation Services for senior citizens, veterans, and individuals with disabilities for fiscal year 2025, 2026, in an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This was on, as an agenda item at your meeting two weeks ago, and it was tabled. Something popped up, I think, during that discussion that may have caused a little bit of confusion, so the tabling actually helped us because it allowed us to get back with Span. We actually had a meeting with Span. I think Ricky is here tonight with Span. Wave Ricky. We also met with members of COG, who were instrumental in getting the grant that was referenced at the last meeting. And so as you saw on your staff report, as we met with that entire group, we learned that the grant that Span did secure from COG for a hundred thousand dollars for the Lake Cities would actually be applied to the riders in Corinth that were sixty-five and older or disabled. And in our particular case, that makes up all of our ridership. And so that was really good news. So we have decreased the amount that we had in that original agreement back down to the budget amount for last year of eighteen thousand dollars versus forty. We actually think we very likely won't have any cost this year, but we didn't wanna put nothing in there simply because something could go awry with the grant, as we, hopefully we don't anticipate that, but it could happen, or there's some incredible spike in ridership that for some reason none of us were anticipating. Don't, don't necessarily think that's gonna happen either. But because we do have the grant, we also added, changed the non-medical trip limitation from four trips per week to six. We just thought we had the opportunity to do that. And we added specific language in there about the grant that basically states what I just said. So this, this agreement will be for not to exceed amount of eighteen thousand dollars, although because of the wonderful grant from COG, which we appreciate greatly, we don't really anticipate any cost. And you saw that last statement in there, they've actually secured, secured another grant from COG that would be applicable in future years for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the Lake Cities. So it, it looks like at this point that we would be covered for two years. Ricky, not if that all sounds right, okay? But anyway, so shout out to COG, obviously, and Ricky for their work getting that done. So sorry for the confusion two weeks ago, but I think we're in actually better position than we thought we were.
Is that for the four Lake Cities or just Corinth, a hundred thousand?
So that was dedicated to the Lake Cities, yes, ma'am.
Do you know what we spent last year?
Please state your name and your address to the records, please.
Ricky De La Paz, Director of Transportation for Span Transportation. So I, I don't actually know what y'all paid for last year, I think.
I think we spent about the eighteen thousand last year. Lana, do you remember? I know you've seen, no, I know those invoices kinda come.
Yeah, I think it was roughly like three or four thousand dollars per, per month during that period where we were doing the extension.
Right, because it was based on an extension where the grant had run out, so we, we put a little bit more money in it. But I think it was between that eighteen and twenty that we ended up having to spend, which was the first time we had, had ever had to spend because we, it had been operating off of a grant up until when it ran out.
Any other questions from council? Okay, I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mayor, I move to approve the interlocal agreement with Span Transit as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item number eight, consider an act on the appointment of Chair and Vice Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As we do every year after we make our board and commission appointments, there is one board that it is a requirement by city code for the council to appoint the Chair and the Vice Chair, and that's the Planning and Zoning Commission. Currently, Alan Nelson serves as the Chair, and Mark Klingel serves as the Vice Chair, and as my understanding, they both said that they would be willing to continue in their role, in those roles, if that is your wish. But we just need to get, get those two positions appointed.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion on that item.
Mayor, I would move to appoint Alan Nelson as Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission and Mark Kingel as Vice Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote.
I'm not really sure what happened. No, no, I'm sorry. The, it appears as though it took my, the last set of motions and put it in this one because they're in votes, so I'll just do a roll call.
Mr. Garber?
Yes.
Ms. Rowell?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Pickens?
Okay, thank you. Okay, council comment and future agenda items. The purpose of this section is to allow each council member the opportunity to provide general updates and/or comments to fellow council members, the public, and/or staff on any issues or future events. Also, in accordance with section 30.085 of the Code of Ordinances, at this time, any council member may direct that an item be added as a business item to that future agenda. Mr. Garber?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Ms. Rowell?
Nothing.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes, sir, I received an email from a citizen concerning adding streetlights and sidewalks for Silver Meadows, Amity Village, and so I wanted to see if that's something that we could maybe discuss in a future council meeting.
Okay. Ms. Pickens?
I have nothing, thanks.
Mr. Campbell?
No, sir, thank you.
All right, then we're adjourned.